Community Development Block Grant. And good news on that one is with the CARES Act, they actually approved a lot more money for the block grant. So I'm feeling pretty good with that. And the second funding mechanism will be for community legacy. I'm asking for $200,923.10, and this would pay for all 35 ramps that are located in the Sustainable Communities District, which I said earlier is pretty much the Village Zone. And we also would like to thank Brookfield HOA. They donated $1,000. And Northgate has donated $100, which greatly helps our chances. We were going to ask the county for money also. However, they put a stop on that due to COVID. So basically, for this resolution is we're asking for $200,900 for this project. And that's the first one.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the approval of Resolution 20-06-R.
I make a motion to accept Resolution Number 20-06-R.
I second the motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Any other discussion on this matter?
Hey, Zach. Go ahead, Joe.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. So if this is passed and the grant is awarded, obviously, do we put it out for bid then for a contractor?
Yes, sir. We put some money into the budget in order to do the engineering. So that's going to be step one, do the engineering for all 117 ramps. And then if we get approved, we'll put it out for bid, depending on how much money we receive.
And second question is then, how will this affect current sidewalks that have most of them are fairly new, put in town?
Oh, sure, yes. The ones in the town that were just put in, they're good. They meet ADA code. These are more in on the back streets, at our parks, in front of the schools, things like that. And a lot are located in the developments.
Like the named developments that donated some of the money towards the... Okay.
Yep, it's going to be every development except Emmett Gardens.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Burns?
Zach, just follow up. Just follow up with me this week. Southgate is also going to donate money towards that cause as well.
Oh, thank you very much.
Has Pembroke Woods been approached about this?
They have. I spoke with a resident. And it didn't sound like there was much interest in it. But I can reach back out to them.
Sure. If you could give me an opportunity to participate in that conversation, I would appreciate it. Maybe it might be worth rethinking.
Okay, great.
Newspart?
Sure, I'll send you an email and I'll send an email over to my contact.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? Any nays? Motion carries? Okay. Item number two, approval of Resolution 20-07-R, Community Legacy Grant. Zach?
Yeah, sure. And this is our yearly application for the facade and restoration program. It's extremely successful. This will be for $75,000. We'll probably receive about 55. They upped our money about five grand last year.
I need a motion to accept the approval of Resolution 20-07-R.
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution Number 20-07-R.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero. Agenda item number three, Approval of FY 2021 Frederick County Sheriff's Office Contract.
We have not received the contract as of yet. I have reached out on several occasions. I would request the mayor to reach out to the sheriff to find out the status of the contract. So we need to table it to July.
Okay.
Will do.
You need a motion for that?
No.
I have a question.
Commissioner Ritz?
Does this... How does this affect our approval of the budget?
It won't. Cole and I estimated, we took last year's contract cost and added a percentage to it to include, they'll probably get a cost of living and a step increase, and then added more to it. So we might be high, a little higher or a little lower, but we should be fine. And that could be something that we would amend. Like we said, we want to bring the budget back mid-year. It'd be something that we probably would amend if need be. Cole?
Okay, okay, thank you.
And that's something we typically estimate each year when we do the budget, because many times we do get that official number later in the game.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
So we're tabling the sheriff's contract until the July meeting. And Mr. Mayor's going to contact the sheriff?
Absolutely.
Ask him if he'd like to have some money. Agenda item number four, Presentation Review of the Fiscal Year 2021 Town Budget.
Right. So after the last budget meeting on May 18th, the only comment or request that we had received was as a result of the meeting or the walkthrough that Zach and I had with Commissioner O'Donnell related to the trails. To touch on that, I agreed with Commissioner O'Donnell that there was damages to several portions of the red trail. However, I do see what the Forest Service stated related to the bond, that the contractor did the best that they could and restored as much as possible to the trails. I don't believe that we would get anything out of the bond. So in speaking with Commissioner O'Donnell, he requested $5,200 in Fund Two for the trails. So looking through Fund Two, I was able to move $1,100 from the community garden to trail maintenance and promotion, and then $1,850 from Fund Two, Department 60, which is the Parks General, to the trail maintenance and promotion, which then would make Fund Two balance at, for trail maintenance and program, at $5,204. I understand that he was looking for another additional $800. We had that conversation. And I was hoping to be able to move $800 into Fund Two for trails for Commissioner O'Donnell when we review the budget mid-year and have additional transfers to make. And that was the only change I had. I don't know if Cole had anything else.
That was it. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir, thank you. First and foremost, again, thank you to staff for giving this consideration and making the site visit. This is appreciated. One more piece of the conversation is that this hopefully will take care of some, but not all of the repair. And in talking with staff, the thought was when the budget is reviewed at a future date this year, and sorry, for next year's budget, rather, that funds might become available based upon better economic, a better economic climate. So my hope is that we can commit to that. The other piece in talking to the mayor, and I appreciate his discussion about this, is that as we move forward to harvest trees and try to improve the watershed in the next forest stand, that we are able to set aside some funds from what we gain in order to repair the trails, anticipating there will be damage. And I really want to come forward and restate something super quick. I am for the forestry program. I think there is value into the harvest. I am hopeful that we can do both, have the trails that bring people to town and spend money in town, and at the same time benefit and meet the needs of our budget by being able to harvest the trees. But I do want to emphasize that it's not just rake and ride. You know, there's professional design and professional construction in these things. So they manage water, they do not erode. So our money does not wash away. And I always try to bring the facts that when I am on the trail, I ask people where they're coming from. And I'm finding people further and further afield coming to visit us because of our trails. And I think that trend will be continued as long as we demonstrate a positive stewardship of the trails. And the users aren't just mountain bikers. They are hikers, they are bird watchers, dog walkers, and so on. So I appreciate the efforts of staff. I appreciate the efforts of the mayor. And I certainly, certainly, certainly appreciate the help the commission has provided in making this happen. So if it is approved, I'm very grateful. If not, you know, I'd be happy to, you know, discuss this further at a better time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anything else on the budget changes that were made? From anyone else? No commissioners? Commissioner Rich, you okay?
I had nothing else to request or nothing else to add. I mean, everything was straightforward. I do appreciate all the time and effort that went into this, as every year. This was a unique situation this year, trying to figure things out with our current situation. So thank you to town staff for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burns?
I'm good with everything.
Commissioner Davis?
Nope, I'm good. And if you want a motion, I'll make a motion that we accept the 2021 budget as amended.
Commissioner Davis has made the motion to accept the 2021 budget as amended. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Burns. Any other discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Mayor?
I just want to thank the staff for the amount of work they put into this under rotating staff and how they did it. One member, our accountant, we'd come in at night, while his assistant would come in during the day just to keep this distancing. And to our town manager and our clerk, a great job. Just, and some crystal balling, but I think you all did a great job in pulling this together. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can we thank you?
Thank you, Ben. We're all of you. Moving on to agenda item number five, Presentation Review of Ordinance 20-07, FY 2021 Employee Salary Chart.
So there were no changes to the mayor's proposed salary chart. I did have a conversation with Commissioner Davis on the salaries. And I know that I've mentioned before that the mayor approved a compensation survey. I had a conference call with an HR consultant who does compensation surveys to make sure that what we're paying our staff is in line with what they should be being paid and making sure we're offering competitive wages and in line with everything. I got the initial report back. Some of the things need to be reviewed again. It does appear there are several positions that will need to be adjusted. And I believe the mayor's hope is to bring it back to the board in the fall, once we have the survey completed and adjust salaries where they need to be. And hopefully, at that time, the revenues will have bounced back some. So but outside of that, there were no changes to the salary chart that was presented on May 18th.
That's correct.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, my comment with the town manager was basically, I'm just concerned about our maintenance people. You know, those guys, when you get to see what they do every day, and their title is maintenance person, that's really not a true title. They're heavy equipment operators. There are all kinds of things that we get quite a good bang for the buck out of them. And when we lose someone, it can cost us anywhere between $5,000 and $10,000 to hire a new person to take their place. I just want to make sure that they're getting paid what they... And all the people as a matter, all the staff. But just, you know, I was using the maintenance people as an example. And that was our conversation with Kathy.
Right.
To follow up with that Kathy, so if we approve the budget for this year, when you get the, obviously, the results and surveys back for, in later fall, would that be for the 2022 employee salary chart then?
Well, that would ultimately be... So I would bring it to the board for approval. The board would then, the mayor, and the board would have to decide if they want to try to implement it in the 2021 budget or wait till the 2022 budget. I probably would like to get it approved prior to the 2022 budget, but that ultimately would be left up to the mayor if he decides he wants to present it then, and then the board to decide at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see where we are. We're pulled together and get back to you.
Just jumping in for a moment, is that all right, Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, sir. The theme that Mr. Davis touched on, the idea of retention of staff, that's our highest priority. Not only do we have a highly skilled workforce, really doing an excellent job for our town typically, we also have a lot of institutional knowledge that these folks bring. And that's not a concrete thing that can be measured. And that just comes from experience and longevity in place. When I spoke to Ms. Willetts, the concern I had, not so much about the numbers that are being presented to us, but the notion of retaining people. Are we at risk of losing people? And there's always that risk. And then she made a good point about that. But hopefully, this is a good step and a good measure to show goodwill on our part and good faith on our part, recognizing the quality of what we have. So personally, I think this is a strong, a strong salary chart that we should support.
Thank you.
I need a motion to accept the salary chart as presented.
I present, I propose a motion to accept the salary chart, Ordinance 20-07 for fiscal year 2021, as presented.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, or second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner O'Donnell. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any nays? Motion carries, five to zero. All righty.
Mr. President?
Just to the end, setting new, setting the agenda for the next meeting?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Ritz?
May I ask a quick question before we set the agenda?
Yes.
And is this due to my technical difficulties? Did I miss any discussion on an update on the small business grant, the application for small businesses for relief for COVID-19?
No, we did not talk about that this evening. So you have a question for Kathy?
Yeah, are we going to be getting an update on that soon, basically? Like, how many applications have we received? How much is left? Are we going to consider a Phase Two, et cetera, et cetera?
Right, so I put on the agenda Phase Two because we do have monies left. The due date is tomorrow, so we'll have a good idea. I believe the mayor and Zach reached out to some individual businesses because I think there were some that were under the impression because they received federal funding, Mr. Mayor?
Right. County or federal?
Yeah, go ahead, May.
County or federal funding? You can receive county funding and also our money as long as there's no duplication for the same process of our action year, we want to be reimbursed for them. So we're, you can't cover the same thing twice, and that makes sense. We are looking at maybe opening up a little bit more to cottage industries at home. We're trying to figure out how to articulate that. But let's just see where we are tomorrow.
Phase one will be done tomorrow?
Right, and we'll be back to you shortly.
Then we will start Phase Two then. Or you have suggestions for Phase Two?
Right, the mayor's working on some suggestions for Phase Two. Once, I think the deadline's four o'clock tomorrow. And then after that, the mayor's going to work on some suggestions for Phase Two and working with, I think you're working with Helen Proffer?
Proffer.
Proffer from the county, as well as the town attorney.
Okay.
Do we have a considerable amount of businesses applying for the loan?
What do we have, Zach? Six?
Six?
Yeah, we had six approvals and one denial.
And the denial was based on, without mentioning the name. I'm just curious.
One of the criteria is you can't have over 15 and over employees. This particular business had over 100 employees.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, I hope we can do something for some of the people that run the businesses from their homes. I didn't realize how many we had until this came out. And then I started getting some phone calls and things. So hopefully, that'll be something we can help some people with.
Yes, I like that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
We invite your, we invite your input. Let's put it that way.
He'll take, he'll take anyone's input. The mayor will, if you want to email him, if you're input.
Somebody, somebody, was that you, Commissioner?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, that's what I wanted to hear. I definitely think we have to look at the home businesses and support them. And, you know, we've got to be very open-minded and very flexible. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you for allowing me to ask that. I'm just making sure we didn't miss anything, that I didn't miss anything, that is.
Oh, you're welcome. We tried to go around you a little bit, just to keep everything a-moving. But we won't forget you.
Appreciate that.
Okay, we need to set the agenda for the next meeting, for July 13th. July 13th meeting.
Okay. I have many items, so bear with me. Start with admin business. The first item, and this is going to be a tentative item, which is the proclamation making August 4th, 2020, National Night Out for consideration. I know there's discussions with the mayor and Ms. Shaw and I think the organization that runs National Night Out, whether or not to hold it in August or not. I will have an update on speed and noise on East Main Street, and then an update on the traffic light configuration at the square. Then I'll have number one. Hopefully, we'll have the sheriff's office contract for consideration. Number two, Phase Two Micro Grant for consider, updating for consideration. I have... Where am I, one, two, three? Ordinance 20-03, Small Cell for consideration. Small Cell Wireless Facility for consideration. Then I have Policy 20-02, Small Wireless Facility Standards for consideration.
Was it facility standards?
Facility standards.
Except for the small cell?
Mm-hmm. Number five is approval of Policy 20-03, Updated Review Fees Policy for consideration. Number six is a resolution approving loan funding for the water clarifier for consideration. Number seven, PNC Bank ADA Spot Conversion Request for Consideration.
Is that a parking spot?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the Award Stan Six Forestry Bid for Consideration. That's going to be advertised for the month beginning today, Zach?
Today, yep.
Okay. So we could bring some recommendations to you at the July 13th meeting.
Stan Six.
Yes, Award Stan Six. And that's what I have.
That's a lot.
I know. We've been putting a lot off.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, sir. Just clarification on the small cell item and the standards item for consideration. I'm concerned about small cells, as you well know. Are we in a position as a municipality where we can charge fees for their being sited in our community? I know other communities have been able to. Is that something that is in the language we're going to be seeing?
Yes. Yes, it's in the language of the ordinance, the initial ordinance. And then it's referenced in, the ordinance references the policy where the fees are.
Terrific, okay.
And the town attorney has been working on some revisions to it and getting it all up to date. So you'll have a clean version on July 13th.
Will there be anything in this also related to citing them? For example, not having them on Main Street, but rather situated in an alley?
That's all in the, and I apologize. I haven't actually read the policy in several weeks. So I'll have to go back and review what's actually in the facility standards. The facility standards, our policy kind of mirrors some of the other municipalities that have been very successful with it. And I believe Rockville was one and possibly Ocean City. So I'll take a look at it. And then, this was brought to you guys several meetings ago. And then I'll take a look at it again.
Great, okay, thank you. Just, I want us to tread very carefully here in that this could be an excellent budget fund source, but we need to balance the aesthetics piece. I definitely want to see us to have that capacity. In talking to an executive from AT&amp;T, my understanding was that these functioned based on their access to fiber optic. And we don't have that available to us as a community. And I think we've really seen the need for it in this COVID emergency, given how much we all depend on that internet access. So I just want to see how it all ties together. That's one of my significance, my set of concerns, I should say. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
I have just one question, just for clarification purposes. It's right after Commissioner O'Donnell's small cell questions. It's Policy P 2003, the Updated Review Fees for Consideration. What exactly is that?
Zach, they're mostly zoning review fees, correct?
We're not going to touch the zoning fees. What it's going to be is currently, for example, we do not charge annexation fees. And this is a significant cost for the town. So just things like that, the site plans, improvement plans. Our fees, Kathy and I and the mayor, we reached out to every single municipality and got their fees. And we are basically on the lowest of the total poll. We haven't updated since 1999. So just our development, these are development fees.
That's what I meant, development.
Okay. Wanted to see where that fit in the grand scheme of things. Just, you know, obviously, I know for wording space, wording space for the agenda items, if it were on, somebody would see that, they're like, hey, what is that?
Yeah, it's not your standard resident. It's just going to be the developers coming into town.
Understood.
And that's where the small cell fees come in, too.
Correct.
But we want the average citizen to understand that. That's the thing.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So Zach, you want to make it updated? What would be better, an explanation of it?
Well, that's the, that's the name of the existing policy. Well, that's the that's the name of the existing policy. We could put updated update development review fees.
OK.
Do we also have to add? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Frank, that's fine.
Do we also have to add the the naming of the park on there?
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
And if we do, can we put that first so the family wouldn't have to sit through all the other stuff?
That could be you could make that an admin item and make that number one.
That would be great, thank you.
I don't know if I could kick back in, I don't know if development would be appropriate because there are other fees in there for, for example, zoning hearing board fees. Review fees really are is the appropriate terms, but.
Well, and we'll just leave it the way it is, and and we'll have to answer the question if people call and ask, and if they do, you can just send them to Zach or I, and we can answer that question.
Yeah, sure, I could I could do that. I just know when things sometimes are online, you know, people, I know there are people out there, they look, they look to see, hey, what are you guys going to be talking about?
Right.
If something's not, you know, what the heck's that? Some things are clear cut, you know, that one, to me, was the only one that didn't was jumping out at me that I wasn't I wasn't quite sure what that was.
Maybe we could put some quotes after it, maybe we could get Terry to put something out, a brief description about it, maybe.
OK, if you want to send that to me tomorrow, Zach, and then Maddie and Terry can just make those notes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I just ask a quick follow up question to Commissioner O'Donnell about the small cell towers?
Commissioner Burns, go ahead.
Just just obviously, you've done your research on this and, you know, attended the MO and the meetings of everything. With the discussion of the fiber optic cables that are going to be laid or that are going to be needed for the 5G cell towers, is that going to invite competition into the area from the various companies like Verizon, AT&amp;T, and and the like? And the only reason I ask is if if the fiber optic cables are, you know, installed, is that going to give, you know, a company like Verizon the ability to run Wi-Fi into homes in the area as well to create more opportunities for people?
Like me.
Yeah.
You guys do see the need, I mean, it's very true. I'll say my expertise is very limited. Here's what I know in simplest terms. The 5G small cell system relies on fiber optic cable to provide the level of service needed for a small area to be covered by the small cell, the small cell tower. So essentially, it works in a way that it covers like a city block. So you would probably see potentially, from my understanding, like potentially eight to 10 in the town of Emmitsburg. Now, going from there, does it invite competition? I don't have enough information to say that, but I do know from my conversation with the AT&amp;T executive that it's a significant financial investment for a company to lay fiber optic in rural communities. It's expensive for them to lay cable, that's the basic, you know, summary of it. I do know that AT&amp;T and their small cell system goals are interconnected and reliant upon fiber optic for the long term. My assumption is therefore, other competitive companies also have to be contemplating that as part of their future action. So do we get a benefit from competition? I would like to think so, but the other side of it is, I suspect that if a company comes along and says they're going to do it, I suspect through the permitting process at the state level or at the county level, it's going to come down to one entity. So I don't know, we as a municipality are going to gain the benefit from that part of the competition. Now, on the other side of the coin, if we have federal advocacy, state level advocacy, and county level advocacy, I think we can come out ahead on this. We can gain the service, first of all, which I think is imperative. And secondly, I think we would find the price would be reasonable for households. But beyond that, that's the limit of what I know, and I hope I've been clear in saying what I'm speculating about also, so.
No, that's fine. You know, obviously, if we're going to, if there's going to be fees attached to this for the town to put these small cell towers in, the competition could benefit us in some way, shape, or form, I believe, because there would be, you know, if there are multiple companies coming in, we may not have to make concessions to, OK, there's only one company, they're going to fight us on this, but if there's multiple companies that are coming in, would that benefit us in the long run as far as not having to make concessions to put the towers in or anything of that nature?
If I might add, that is one thing that the town attorney's been working on, that the small cell does not offer any favoritism to one company over another, as we recently received a request from Comcast to adjust our ordinance, and that's what they've been working on, so there is no favoritism in our ordinance.
No, and I appreciate that. I think, you know, I think these these times have definitely shown that the reliability of our internet has been spotty at best in some cases, and the competition of allowing other companies beyond Comcast into the area might ultimately benefit everyone if there was a second wave of this or anything of that nature where more people were forced to be working from home and and reliant on the internet on a on a basic daily basis.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll coat tail with one last thing, I promise, but additionally, lacking fiber optic limits businesses thinking about Emmitsburg as a site for their operations, be it a headquarters or a branch. So without that quality fiber optic access, it's an economic limiter to our community.
I completely agree, and I understand wholeheartedly with that statement. What my long term hope would be is that as Mount St. Mary's continues to expand and move their graduate programs, the demand for something of that nature would entice these companies to come into the area to provide that service for, you know, not only Emmitsburg, but the surrounding community as well for the possible business advantages to those companies.
All righty, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll I'll go through the agenda items so everybody knows what's going to be, make sure we have everything. Administrative business will be naming of the park in G. Myers. The National Night Out for August. Speed and and noise update for the town, traffic light at the square. And that's the four administrative business items. OK, for the town agenda will be the sheriff contract is number one. The micro grant will be number two. Ordnance 20-03 small cell will be three. Policy 20-02 facility standard small cell will be four. Reviewing the the policy fees will be five. Is that what it is? A resolution for loan for for the clarifier will be six. The PNC Bank parking spot will be seven. And the forestry bid for for stand six will that will be awarded will be eight. Is that everything we have for the agenda?
Yes.
No consent agenda or anything? I need everybody's consent for the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? We have full consent for the town agenda for July 13th, which will be a big agenda for that item for that day, too.
Mr. Sweeney, may I?
Mr. I mean, Mr. Mayor?
I just, before we get out of here, our town planner, Zach, has been working from home because his wife is expecting for most our the entire pandemic alert, and they're expecting in June, he will be working from home and on maternity leave. Zach, from the whole Emmitsburg family of residents, myself, staff, and commissioners, we just wish you the best and everything goes well this month for you and your family.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Good luck, good luck, Zach, sleep while you can.
Thanks, Zach. Good point.
Congratulations, you're number three.
All right, thanks, everyone. I need a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, second by Commissioner Burns. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays? Thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
I'll hear you at the next agenda meeting. It is 9:43?
I have two.
Forty-two, 9:42?
Turn that off for you, Kathy. You gotta turn it off.
I'm not sure.
Is there anything to sign?